This time, I'd like to call the November 13th Macon County Board of Commission to Order. And it's hard to believe it's already November, but with this time change and the weather we had Tuesday, sure made a believer out of me. Winter came quick. We've got a full agenda. I think we'll get started with announcements. Ms. Tammy? Mr. Cabe?
So I actually have a couple. The first one's going to be a deletion on your announcements under 2A. It talks about a special meeting on December 1st. Usually, we have an organizational meeting in December. And you only have to do that the first Monday in December on even numbered years. So odd number of years, you can actually defer that to your regular meeting in December. So unless the board is so inclined to have a special meeting to do your organizational meeting, they can tackle that at the regular meeting on December 9th. Item 2A, obviously, the Board of Health approved an early retirement for Health Director Kathy McGah after October 28th, 2025 regular meeting. And HR Director, Safety Director Tammy Keizer has been appointed as interim Health Director. And she started in that role on Monday. Item 2C actually has been updated since we put this out. Obviously, the federal government shutdown is now over. So some of those updates on those programs are no longer pertinent. We did speak to the Housing Department today. The weatherization funds are actually back already in full function. The heat funds for heat repairs are actually partially funded. And he's working on some options on how to handle those. And of course, we can snap. Couple of updates on recreation things. We had some conversations with our engineer, Joe Allen. Talked to them today, working out some final details on the restroom facility for the pickleball courts. Finally get that wrapped up. We were locating some utility lines, making sure we had all that together. So we're still on track with that to try and pull that off for a summer completion date. That's still our goal. Also, we had some things we're really doing over at the Nana Haila Rec Park. We wanted to do some improvements to that multi-use court over there. We gotta take some, do some things with some trees and upgrade that facility a little. We've sent some requests to Duke Energy. That's actually a Duke Energy facility that we leave space on. So we've sent it to them to get their approval. We're waiting on that to come back. And unfortunately, because of cold weather, it may be spring before we can pave that court. But that actually is in the process. And then tonight is Lindsey Leopard's first night as our finance director. So I just wanted to welcome Lindsey.
Welcome.
And I believe.
All right. Commissioner Breeden? Commissioner Antoine?
Welcome to Lindsey and welcome to the new version of Eric.
My apologies, I should have been using.
Commissioner Shields?
I just want to say thank you to the county and Ms. McCoo and all of you who participated in the Green Light Program that we had, we announced last meeting. And it ended on the November 11th. A lot of good participation and very well meaningful. And Jamie, I appreciate you taking care of all the convenience centers. And Bill, appreciate you being here tonight. McGah, I see you looking the other way, but it's all right. I know you're better and appreciate you.
Commissioner Sherrill?
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like, it's hard to believe that three years have passed since I was first elected. I have enjoyed serving the taxpayers and citizens of Macon County. I have enjoyed working alongside my fellow commissioners. While not pretty at times and not easy, I feel we have made great progress in the past three years. However, there is still a lot more work to do. I'm announcing tonight that my intentions are to seek reelection and hopefully serve the taxpayers and citizens of Macon County for four more years.
Mr. John? Ms. Leopard? Mr. Goss? All right. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Shields to lead us in a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance.
Please stand, if able. Oh, man. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shields.
Yes, sir.
All right. No public hearings tonight. Do we have any additions to the agenda? Mr. Cabe says no. All right. Public comment period? Ms. Tammy? Thank you. All right. Ms. Mary Ann Ingram?
Hi, everyone. Thank you. I'm Mary Ann Ingram. I've been living in Franklin, North Carolina since 2020, no, 93. And I live at 245 Sloan Road. No, that's where I work. Anyway. I just want to say I had a great experience today coming from a client's house. And it involved two horses. And the health, the animal control folks were there. And they stopped everybody. And I was way back and saw the situation and don't need to bother horses whenever they're trying to be put in a carrier. And as they finished getting the horses in, and they did such a kind job in getting them in the carrier. And so as I passed by, I saw that it was animal control. And I said, that was a great job, guys. And they said, yeah, it was two horses that the people could no longer take care of. And so we had to come get them. And I said, I hope you have somewhere for them to go. And he says, oh, yeah, we already have a home for them. So I just want to let you know, great job with our animal control and getting horses. Those are big animals to take care of. So just saying, just an experience that I had. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mary Ann. All right. Betsy Beest?
Good evening. Thanks for having us. Thanks for giving us a snow day on Tuesday. That was kind of fun. I have two things that I want to talk about. One, FRL was what I had put on the agenda sheet there. And I just want to remind you that you had stated publicly, you, the board, you, said that we would not leave the FRL. So I just want to remind you that you did say that. And thank you for saying that. And I hope you stick to that. Second thing is quarter cent sales tax. I said it before when you brought it up, and I'm going to say it again. I will do whatever it takes to help you guys pass that. So you didn't ask last time. You didn't ask for our help. And I will personally go put out yard signs. I'll do whatever it takes, educate people, do forums, whatever, to understand exactly what that means and how it will help rather than hurt us. So please call on me to help because I'm happy to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beest. All right. That wraps up public comment. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I have one for you to consider. Item number 13B, the planning board appointment. We had only, by the time we closed applications, we'd only gotten two applications for that. And I know they obviously need members because they struggle sometimes getting a forum. We actually had another application come in after the deadline. And in light of making sure that we have the right folks in the right places and to give everybody an opportunity for you to discuss that, it might be pertinent to go ahead and pull item 13B. And I don't think, I don't think that will hurt anything for any kind of upcoming meeting. And perhaps we can discuss that membership maybe at the December meeting.
All right. Board? All right. We'll scratch item 13B. Any other adjustments? Hearing none, looking for a motion to approve the agenda?
Salute.
Motion by Commissioner Breeden.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Antoine. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your right arm stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Tammy. Five-oh. All right. Moving on to old business. Item A, update and continued discussion regarding consolidation of Macon County public health. Commissioner Breeden? Commissioner Sherrill?
Well, I think it would be good if we brought Mr. Higdon up here and let everyone know what actually transpired at the last Health Board meeting and what the Health Board decided at that meeting.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thanks for having me today. I don't know, you know, what needs to be said other than, you know, at our last meeting. And I'm sure that it was, the resolutions made publicly available. But our board at the last meeting, I know it was discussed about in the previous meeting when we had the presentations from Kristi Nikki Odom from our, the School of Governance. And there was some discussion had, and I think there was an unofficial kind of nod to do the consolidation with the current board still being the policymaking board while the county would take over the, there would be a consolidation of two public services. County would then take over HR. And so then in our last meeting, we kind of made that an official resolution and passed, the board passed that to recommend consolidation to your board. Is there anything else that I need to touch on, John, other than that?
I think the most important was for you as the chairman to state what the board as a whole.
Yeah, our board as a whole decided to vote to recommend or the consolidation with animal services. And then with the, I guess, the middle option that was discussed at the previous meeting here of the us becoming a policymaking portion of the board and then the county taking over all the HR personnel and stuff.
So I'll kind of add on to that. In your packet, there is a resolution if you're so inclined to approve that consolidation. It does specifically state that the current Health Board will, the members will roll over into becoming the consolidated Health Board. There will be four vacancies because that board has to be a larger board. And then there's a tentative timeline that we would have to consider as far as how, what kind of timeframe that would take place. So you should, one of the things you need to consider if you want to pass this resolution is a date that you would want to make this effective. Ms. Keizer and I have looked at some tentative timelines that we discussed with Eric to make sure that would happen. Do you want to talk about those now? So the, you want to do that, Tammy?
Whichever you wanted to.
You go ahead.
So the Board of Health, the current Board of Health will become the nominating committee for those vacant positions. And so at their next meeting, they could begin that process if the resolution is passed this evening. The December 9th meeting, we felt like would be too soon to have the applications in to bring to this board for approval. So thinking that the January 13th meeting would be when those applications could come forward for approval. And so that that would be the date of the consolidation that would go in the draft resolution that you have this evening, if that is acceptable.
And of course, with the fact that the consolidation involves animal services, there's not a lot of structural change. The implementation process will actually be fairly easy. There's some policies that we'll have to look at. We have to send to the state just to verify that they meet the compliance. But they will because that's what they're modeled after. So basically, I guess at this point, it's up for discussion for the board if you want to follow through with approval of that resolution.
All right. Thanks, Garrett.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
I guess we can discuss it after this motion's made. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution as presented for consolidation of Macon County Public Health with Animal Services.
Hearing motion by Commissioner Breeden. Second by Commissioner Sherrill. Any further discussion? I'd like to briefly just state, Mr. Higdon and the Board of Health, thank you for your time. I know all of you have spent an enormous amount of time, weekends, evenings, and this little piece of paper didn't come easy. So thank you and thanks to our two liaisons. There's been a lot of, a lot of time involved.
Yeah. I'd like to echo that too and just say thanks to John Sherrill for all the hard work. I mean, we've put in a lot of time in. Garrett, Angie Stone's here, all the Board of Health members. It's been a, it's been a fun time at those meetings. And they've been long and, but we, you know, we've finally come to an agreement and I think it's going to be a good thing. So thanks for your help and yours as well.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, before you vote, we do need to know the date, the effective date that's going to be placed into that resolution.
Thank you.
January 13th?
January 13th?
January 13th, 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Goss.
Mr. Manager, if you, if you would, you would, Ms. Keizer, explain what is actually happening with the consolidation? What is actually changing in the Health Department? Because I think there's some fear out there that something's going to go haywire at the Health Department, and that's not at all the case. But if you would.
I can, I can start and then I'll let Tammy add on. As far as any administrative changes, there really won't be a lot. The new, at this, at that point, if the new person that comes in starts January 13th, around that date, they will be a consolidated Health and Human Services Director over Health and Animal Services instead of a quote, "Health Director" on paper. Same duties essentially, different title. That person upon hiring would be, I would be in charge of the hiring, but it'd be with the consent of the consolidated Health Board. So not, that's probably the only major change. And it does state in the resolution that I have to have consent of that board before we were to hire somebody. They would fall under the county personnel policies, which are essentially identical to the state policies. All of our policies will meet the same standards. Tammy, I don't know what else. Services will be the same. We're not looking to remove in positions. We're not changing people. We're not taking duties away. We're not eliminating positions. It's an administrative change mainly for HR purposes. And that's about it.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. And a second with the effective date of the first, I'm sorry, the 13th of January. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your right arm stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Tammy, please let the record be flat and five-oh. All right. Item B, continued discussion regarding solid waste operations and bid review. Manager Cabe and solid waste director, Ms. Jamie Pecu.
So I will kind of introduce where we're at. Obviously, the last meeting, we talked about some bids we'd received. We talked about our, our future for the solid waste program. And there were some questions about our future and where we were going to, going to head and options that were available to us. So Jamie has put together a presentation tonight that covers, I think, most of those options and will be a good spot for some discussion. And when she finishes, obviously, we'll have time for questions. And then I have a recommendation on where I think we should go from there for the board's consideration. And then we'll kind of lay out a timeline on what this would look like depending on what options we have.
Okay. So we kind of looked at three options. Option one, build the new landfill cell, transfer all waste out of county, or, and then we will discuss an incinerator. So with the new landfill, we did receive new bids on November 6th. We received bids for the smaller cell 2A and then the larger cell 2. When we transferred, we did an RFP for transferring all waste out of county. Proposals were due on October 28th. We didn't receive any. And then the incinerator, we'll just kind of discuss that a little bit. So Phase 3 Cell 2, the bid. So just recap, the previous bid for construction came in at about 10.3 million. That was the lowest responsive bid. We received five bids on November 6th. The lowest for the full cell was 8.4. Again, that's the larger cell, which is about 12 and a half acres for eight to 10 years of capacity. The lowest bid for Cell 2A, which is the smaller cell, is 4.6 million. So that larger cell, the 8.4, that's about 207,000 per year over the current loan payment that we pay right now. So there is a potential for an increase in fees. Here is just the detail of the cost for that new cell. So that pre-construction is something we've already paid for or are going to pay for. And then it just shows you the construction administration, construction CQA and all that. So the full, the full amount is 10.3 million. Here's the bid tab. Again, that first section is the base bid, which is the smaller cell, Cell 2A. You can see the, the five contractors at the top. So in the, kind of towards the top there, that total bid, section A plus B, that's where your, your total bid is. So that's the 4.6 right there. The next bidder came in at 5.77 million. So then the next one, the alternate bid, is going to be your full Cell 2. And so there, you can see at the, at the bottom of that, there's your, your full total. So there's your 8.4 million. The next one came in at nine, roughly about 9.9, a little under. Just stop me if I'm moving too fast. So the RFP for transferring waste. So again, no proposals were received. We did receive a letter from Republic Services saying they could not take our waste at White Oak landfill. So after that, we accepted informal quotes for hauling and then called all the private landfills within 100 mile distance, which is about four. And then two of them said they could not accept our waste just due to certain restrictions. So the best quote for hauling came in with $600 per trip, which is about $30 a ton for Franklin. Highlands, it was $650 per trip, which is about $32.50 per ton. For your landfill disposal, I got two quotes from one landfill. That was $69 per ton for hauling, disposal and trailers. Or it was just $30, $33 per ton for disposal. So your cheapest option there would be about $63 per ton for Franklin, $65.50 per ton for Highlands. And again, that's just to transfer the waste out. So incineration, it's hard to predict the cost of incineration just for a small county like Macon County, but I'll go through the pros and cons of it. So it does reduce your waste stream by 95%. And all that energy can be recovered and reduce your fossil fuel dependency. Some of your cons is going to be more air pollution. You'll still have some type of disposal with the ash. And it may be hazardous just depending on the makeup of that. It's an extremely high cost for building and operating. A high amount of tonnage is typically needed for operation, more than we receive here. And then you may not be able to get the air permit required for that just due to our proximity to the Great Smoky Mountain National Park. Just some of the land value. In 1989, 185 acres was purchased for 1.2 million. That currently has multiple county offices and also the landfill expansion. It was paid for by the general fund, not the enterprise fund, because it was not established yet. And currently, the land is valued at 9.3. That's just the land, not the, the buildings on it. An additional purchase of property in 1996, 1997 for about 450,000 was purchased. And that's where the landfill office sits and part of the Phase 2 expansion. Currently, the land and the office are valued at about 730,000. Phase 3 property was purchased in 2015 for 1.5 million. That was just to give better geometry for the landfill and add some additional airspace. And currently, that land is assessed at 1.3 million. So, and just so you know, if you did have to sell this property, you would have to put on the deed that it was used for a sanitary landfill. This next slide just shows you those, those pieces of property. So that middle one is your large, 185. That currently contains all the landfills. The one at the bottom is where the landfill office is. And then the top is that additional piece that was purchased in 2015. And like you see, that just kind of rounded it out. So your land value going forward, about 43 and a half acres could be available for some type of office if Phase 3 Cell 2 was not built. And again, that's including that required landfill buffer. If Phase 3 Cell 2 is built, 24 and a half acres would be available for offices. And obviously, that's if you don't go any further with the landfill after that. It was not considered for residential building, just the buffer would be greater. So you wouldn't have as much land. So cost to open infrastructure wise. So Phase 3 Cell 2, like mentioned, that would be your 10.3 million. Again, all your fees are there. That's 673 has already been spent. The transfer station, just going forward, I'm just going to be comparing both of those side by side. So your transfer station would be about 7.6 million for your infrastructure. Again, that 700, or 673,000 was added over here too because it's already money we've spent. So that, that quote would be a replacement of the recovery building, a need for a pit design for compaction, trailer storage pads for leachate. And that estimate is based on just some of the transfer station projects that McGill has done recently. So when we're talking about permanent, a permit to operate a transfer station, you're looking about an 18 month time period from start to finish. So that's when you could actually operate your transfer station after 18 months. Just equipment needs. So for Phase 3 Cell 2, you know, you're looking at probably about $2 million, a compactor and a dozer. For a transfer station, you would need a loader to replace the Cindabogan just because it would add that additional compaction. And then you may need some additional walking floor trailers if the hauler does not provide. So we, I estimated there are about seven. So that gets you to that 1 million mark. So cost to operate, Phase 3 Cell 2. So that estimate right there, that, that 4.7 million, so our current budget is 5.8 million total. We have an additional eight groundwater wells that are going to have to be monitored for that new cell, which is about 16,000 per year. And then that 4.7 is just the debt service is removed just because you're going to have to add in that additional 207,000. So for the transfer station, I was able to decrease that budget by a little over a million if we go to the transfer. So 3.6 just for operation. That's decreasing employees, decreasing operational supplies and equipment maintenance, removing the debt service, removing closure costs and removing engineer fees. So that $63 per ton, like I said, that was the cheapest option I could find. So you'd have to multiply that by the 48,000 tons we landfilled last year to get that, that estimate. So closure after your, your cell is full, you have to close it. So closure, the, the. have to close it. So closure, the estimate is about 4.8 million. And like I said, we currently save for closure in our budget, but that would probably need to be increased going forward. The transfer station has a closure cost estimate that's required by DEQ. That estimate is just the Highlands Transfer Station estimate. It would probably need to be a little larger for the facility that we're talking about down here, but I just, I went with the Highlands Transfer Station because that's a known. Something to be considered, if the Phase 3 Cell 2 is not considered and not pursued, you would have to close both Phase 2 and Phase 3 Cell 1 all at once, which may, we may not have enough set aside for both closures at one time. So you do have to continue to monitor your cell after you close it. So that's called post-closure. You have to fund it for 30 years. So that's a 1.8 estimate there. Transfer station also is required to have some type of post-closure. And so that is, again, the transfer station estimate. So just to walk through very briefly environmental monitoring, we monitor for four things, groundwater, leachate, stormwater, and landfill gas. So annually, this is for the whole facility. We spend about 200,000 for groundwater testing. That's including PFOS, which is a new emerging contaminant. I'm not sure where that's going to go in the future, but that's why it is kind of a little more inflated. And like I said, you would need those eight new groundwater wells for the new cell. So that would increase your groundwater cost. Leachate, I'm not sure that the cost would be directly related to the larger landfill footprint. We have an agreement with the wastewater treatment plant, and so that's that cost. If the agreement was ever changed, that could potentially increase with the larger footprint, but as of right now, it does not. Stormwater, it's sampled and maintained by landfill staff. We have to send the samples off to be tested, so that's that cost. Again, that's dependent on property boundary, not necessarily your larger landfill footprint. Landfill gas is sampled by staff, and so the more wells added would not necessarily be reflected in cost by more wells. Just something to keep in mind, when, if you do continue to build out, Phase 3 Cell 3 will trigger an air quality permit just by the waste in place, but is not needed for Phase 3 Cell 2. Again, when you're talking about environmental monitoring and the cost that comes with it, it's more about the contaminants you find rather than your larger footprint. So after talking through all of those costs, I tried my best to consolidate it into this lovely table here, where you're going to be comparing both the cell and the transfer station. So your cost to open, equipment needs, closure and post-closure are all divided by 10 through the life of the cell. So that's 10 years. So you're going to have your 1.3, you know, million dollar payment per year, and then the infrastructure for the transfer station at 912,000. So in operation for the transfer station, you'll see there's two numbers there. That 3.7 is just for operation, and then the 3 million is just to transfer the waste. So you're looking at about an $800,000 difference there. And McGill also did their own analysis similar to this, but they pushed it out 10 years. And their savings was about 600 million over a 10-year term for landfilling as opposed to transfer.
Say that again?
600 million?
6 million over a 10-year period. That landfill would be cheaper than the transfer station. And again, those are today's numbers. It's hard to predict the future. So just, there are risks with both situations, obviously. So Phase 3 Cell 2 is going to have your additional liability, especially for that environmental monitoring. You know, future costs can be hard to predict, like we're seeing with this construction cost. Some of your advantages are going to be more control over your costs. You can maximize that permitted landfill space that we know we have, and your money has a potential to stay in Macon County. Your transfer station, your risk, you're going to have to have some waste handling decisions, such like brush, sludge, and those materials useful, we charge a cheaper fee for. You would have less control over those costs or the distances for transfer. Something else we didn't talk about, an escalation clause. A lot of the contracts we looked at do have those in there, and that was not considered in those estimates. Some advantages, you would have less liability, and your cost is very transparent. So just to touch back on this, you know, going forward, I do think it would be helpful to look at some of our fees and changing some of those structures. You could reduce hours to save additional cost. And I think we need to seriously look at some different strategies to try to prevent some of that out-of-county waste that I'm told is coming in, just to try to help both scenarios, whichever way we go. So not all bad. Currently, DEQ has a recycling grant out there. It's, I think, a max of 25 million, and it's for Hurricane Helene counties that were affected. Currently, you have a $5 million cap per project with no match from the county. So we are obviously going to pursue that, and that is a list of some of the items we are going to request. We're going to try to request the replacement of the back part of the RPC building, which is the recycling building that was torn down due to damage. And when that building was torn down, we also had to take out the bailers through a request, a new baler, replace the sits here for recycling operations, ask for an extra walking floor trailer for recycling operations whenever that baler is down for maintenance, ask to fully fund the new Carson Center, replace the roll-off truck that is roadworthy, and then repair the recovery building, which was obviously damaged by fire. DEQ gave us the advice to just put everything in our request, and then they would pick out the projects that they would like to fund. And there's also another grant coming soon, the Disaster Debris Grant, which just basically handles yard waste debris. So this, these last couple of slides are done by Davenport for the loan. Did you want to?
Sure, I can, I can talk a little about that. Obviously, there's a lot of information in this, in this proposal or in this presentation that Jamie has done. And we don't anticipate that you're going to be able to process all of it tonight, but there's a few things we need to talk about, and there's some urgency on a couple of things that we need to discuss. So I guess basically, it's a synopsis on what Jamie has talked about. Based on the numbers that we're seeing and the information that we have, I still think we need to construct the cell at the landfill as we have now. We're already permitted. We're already started the process years ago, and there's not a lot we can do with it without. And the one thing that concerned me over the RFP process for the hauling was immediately the closest facility to us said, "We don't have any space." So that concerns me a little. And I'm very conservative as far as, I'm a fixed payment kind of guy. I'd rather know what I'm paying for long-term versus ups and downs on things. So I think we still need to consider construction of that landfill cell. We were also pleasantly surprised on some of the hauling prices that we had. So I think a hybrid version is something we can consider, particularly because you saw some expense in there for a transfer station in Franklin. We already have a transfer station in Highlands. It's already permitted, so that's an easy one to start moving stuff out of. So I think if we pursued a hybrid look at this, and we've already talked to you about having Davenport look at our financials and get us a really, a true business plan for this, not just for this year, but for the next 10, 20 years, to set us up where we need to be, we can take that into consideration, work that into any changes that we may have on the fee structure, look at the options that are available out there, and come up with a solution that, for the most part, gives you some stability on the payments and the operating costs that you may have on stuff, but gives you some options to maybe extend the life on the cell if you were able to ship stuff somewhere. If for some reason we get to the point where we can't use the cell, then you already have an agreement to take it somewhere. So in my opinion, I think looking at that hybrid model is a good option to take. Now, obviously, that's going to take some time. The urgency that we have is the existing cell is going to be full soon, so we have to make some decisions. We actually had reached out to, we put an RFP out for some bank financing back in June of 2025 to about, they sent out some invitations, about 50 different banks, and we had four proposals back from different banks, and pretty decent proposals. Obviously, we've been through a long bid process, and we went back and talked to the, what seemed to be the Choice Bank, which was Webster Bank. They provided the best terms for the financing package. They've been very good to discuss options with us and payment plans, and were basically stayed in the game through the end. For this process to work, basically, you're issuing special obligation bonds. And the way that process works is you, we have to send that request to the local government commission. We have a proposal put together. We send it to the local government commission. They have to approve the issuance of those and that financing for us. Then it comes back for you for final approval, and then we would do a closing and do a process after that to close everything out. So it's actually a 60-day process somewhere in that neighborhood to get everything done. So what I was going to discuss tonight, you see two options there. Option one at the bottom was if we just did Cell 2A, it would be a not-to-exceed amount. It would probably cost us about 6.2 million to do the smaller part of that cell, which would get you somewhere around a five-year lifespan. The more financially feasible in the long term is to look at Option 2, which is to do the Cell 2A, 2B together, which is the bigger cell, which the numbers that we'd looked at based on the CQA numbers, engineer numbers, and the bid tabs that we had come in would be right around a not-to-exceed amount of 10.5 for 10 million or 10-year maturity. My recommendation was going to be tonight, and I'll open it up, I'll go ahead and do it, and then I'll open it up for questions for Jamie after that. My recommendation tonight would be to, for you to approve a findings resolution, which is in your packet, to send the request to the local government commission to see if they will approve Option 2, not to exceed 10.5 million up for a 10-year maturity. The reason I would really like to have that done tonight is they, the local government commission, meets on December the 2nd. Typically, you have to have a 40-day, 45-day application period. We've already submitted some preliminary paperwork to make sure that we're in line, and we have talked to them, and they have agreed that even though the meeting is on December 2nd, if we get that findings resolution approved tonight to see if they were okay with us obtaining that financing, they would put it on the agenda for December the 2nd, which would get it back to us by, we could consider it in our December 9th meeting. The reason that's a little bit of an urgency is if we don't meet the December deadline for the December meeting of the local government commission, we roll into next year. We have to have our 2025 audit back. There's a process that has to go through with that. So it would be at least a three-month process for that to happen. So probably the earliest that I could get a financing process on the table for the local government commission would probably be March or April of 2026, which means by the time we went through the process to bring it back to you again, get a closing date, choose a contractor, get everything together, is probably going to be May-ish of 2026. And with us running out of time, I didn't really feel like that was something we wanted to entertain. So tonight, my recommendation was going to be, let's put some serious thought into the hybrid model. Let's go ahead and approve that findings resolution to ask the local government commission to see if they would approve Option 2, which is up to the 10 and 1/2 million for 10-year maturity, which is reasonably close to the payment we're making now. It's, we're already, we're paying $1,095,000 and some change, if I'm not mistaken, Lindsay, somewhere in that neighborhood now. So there's not a whole lot of difference in it. That will get us started on the financial process. It buys us some time to go through the rest of this process without delaying a cell construction any longer while we process the other information, get a really good game plan together. And you also need to understand that, I just want to make it very clear, that just approving that findings resolution tonight does not 100% obligate you. That resolution specifically states, and it is a requirement, that once LGC approves that, it has to come back to you. And at that point, you have the choice to either accept it or deny. You could still say, you know, appreciate the offer, but no, we don't want to consider that. So that still gives you time to process the information, make the decision. We have bid tabs for the bids that came in, but we do not have to choose the bidder tonight. The bid tabs go with the LGC application, and that's all that's needed for that process. So essentially, you could, you could go into the December meeting, you could have time to give us time to look at the bids, to make sure we're happy with everything, make sure everything meets the needs of what we need, look at the financing package, and you could do that at the December meeting. And honestly, you could probably even do that at the January meeting. So that's a lot for me to talk about, but that was going to be my suggestion.
I knew it, no, I presented.
Jamie did me a really good, Jamie made me a really good slide.
That was a very good presentation. I think it was very informative. I think it lets the people, the citizens and the taxpayers of Macon County, see this is where we are as far as the landfill. It's probably been years and years since this has actually been really looked into what the options are. And so if we went with Option 2, as you're recommending, what is the lifespan? Is that a 10-year?
It should be a 10-year lifespan. It will depend on the volume coming in. If we base it on a-
You're talking about the landfill?
If we do-
Yeah, so 8 is the worst-case scenario, 10 is the kind of where you want to be, I guess. It's not the best case, but it-
If the waste from Highlands went somewhere else, how long would that, what kind of timeframe?
So the waste from Highlands is currently about a fourth of our total waste. So save you two years if you, if you did it the entire time. Now, again, I don't know if you can afford that, but that would save you on space. So yeah, and that's hopefully something Davenport can look at and kind of, kind of see how those things work out. But yeah.
And that's the other reason it's very important, especially to have these numbers and to give Davenport time. Once we have solid numbers, that gives us something to work off of, and we can, we can make that plan, and we can, we can make sure that we get to the 10-year mark if we ship so much. But this is what it's going to cost us. And then obviously, look at those fees. Are those fees still fair? Do we need to adjust them somewhere? The tonnage is a little harder for me to calculate. Jamie, she did really well doing the division. Obviously, Highlands pays a little more because of the transfer station up there, 72.50 versus 78.50. That's a little harder to calculate. You got to know your tonnage coming in, which we can estimate and figure that out. And that, the tipping fee, obviously, is what she's talking about. The availability fee is what goes out on the tax bills, which is currently set at $120. Lindsay can correct me if I'm wrong, but $120, every dollar brings in about 28,000, I believe, if I do that correctly. So, you know, a $4 increase gives you $100,000. So it sounds bad to talk about a change in that, but a $4 increase makes a lot of money on the availability fee. The only thing is you can only do that when you do the tax, when you set the budget and do the tax rate. So it's very important for us to have this started early, to have this conversation and get Davenport involved so we can consider that during the budget process. And that way, you can make an educated decision on what we need to do with those fees and those availability fees or tipping fees going forward. And I will, I will hit back on the, can you go back a couple of slides, Jamie, to the grant slide? Yes. So that's a very positive thing for us. There are very few counties that have landfills. So we are a big target for folks, particularly when they want to hand out money. It's also a terrible thing that Helene hit, but it's also been very beneficial to us because of the availability that that has for us to apply for that money. Fortunately, we have some projects that are almost shovel-ready to go, which will look good for us. Southwestern Commission is helping us put that packet together. We've had a lot of questions about Carson, and you see Carson on there. Obviously, we may have to wait another little time period to make sure we get this back, but it would certainly be beneficial to the taxpayers if we were to be able to receive funding to pay for Carson completely from another source. Same thing with the back of the RPC building or this equipment, because you saw that, some of that equipment on the other slide back there. But if you can, if you can pay for it out of this fund somehow, that helps us so that we're not having to worry about the tipping fees and availability fees. So I think that's a wonderful thing that we're trying to explore that. And we'll just have to, we're very close to getting some numbers finalized. That grant has to be in, I think, January 31st.
You can turn it in. You can turn it in earlier, and they can accept it earlier.
Yes, that that's the good thing is the sooner we get it in, the sooner we get in line, and we we get some of those funds. So we're going to do everything possible to try and pull those funds back in. The other thing, I don't I don't want to talk too much about it, but obviously, if you go back to the very first couple of slides, you don't have to go back, Jamie, but we talked about some of the funds that we've already spent on the current process for the landfill, the fees and other things. Part of the financing package is to reimburse ourselves for those, because that came out of our fund balance. Well, then that puts it back into our fund balance that we can address some of those equipment needs, which again, is part of the financial plan that we'll do with Davenport. And McGill, we've actually talked to them about helping us work out a business plan for that, to get where you need to be with those decisions, particularly when we come into budget time. I talked a whole lot.
You you do a great job.
Can you repeat all that?
I learned a lot about trash. It's very interesting, by the way. So yes, my my recommendation would be tonight would be approve that findings resolution, to send it to the local government commission to request approval of a not to exceed 10.5 million dollar funding package for a 10 year term.
Can you go back to option two? I think that information, what you're talking about there?
Yes, sir.
The financing detail, yeah. So I'd like to make a motion that the financing detail, the Webster Bank proposal, financing option two dash NTE, 10.5 million, comma, 10 year term. Make that as a motion to
Approval of the findings findings resolution to submit to the LGC.
All right. Hearing motion by Commissioner Shields.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Commissioner Sherrill. Any further discussion? I don't want to get too far into this. I do have a couple of questions.
First, um, do you mind if McGill comes up, just in case you you need him?
Sure. A lot of these unfortunately are directed to you.
Oh, okay.
But it's okay. Come on, Mr. McGill. So why do we have post closure fees on a transfer station?
Um, that is something DEQ requires and
Yeah, like you mean, a couple of years ago, when they made you have to do a full inspection of all the transfer stations and report any inefficiencies, in any deficiencies in that at all, as well as, we thought the same thing when we heard it. It's a building. But you I mean, what they're saying is, is you don't just leave, leave a building. You're going to tear it down, or you're going to close it up, or you're going to do something. So are you going, what what are you going to do with that building? You don't want a vacant building just standing there once you're done with your solid waste process. So, you know, you they're suggesting you have to close it up, and you have to, you know, seal up the septic tanks and the sewer system and all those things. So
It's not, I don't think it's necessarily money you're going to be spending in post closure. I think it's just a liability that they want you to fund, essentially. So if you have that transfer station, they want you to have to prove that you have $20,000. So if you close that transfer station, you could then take care of any post closure costs that you may have. So would that be fair to say? It's not necessarily that's how much you're going to be paying.
So, big picture, right? The image you showed of the landfill itself, Tennessee River borders on the northern side, like we're geographically isolated. Like, what is the capacity? Like, what's our duration long term on the landfill, the whole landfill?
Um, so I've put, what do we, 30 years is where we're at. So that is the only place we can put a landfill. They did a study back whenever they first started phase three, a development.
12, 13.
And and there is no other place in Macon County for a landfill.
So we're talking 30 years, and I feel like we heard that before, before COVID hit, and COVID
You heard 50 to 60 years before COVID hit.
Okay, so now we're at 30 in five years.
Yes.
I guess my concern is, to Mr. Cape's point about the hybrid approach, the hole is only so big, right? So that's why I like the transfer thought, because maybe we transfer, you know, a quarter, a half, maybe three quarters of all of our debris for five, 10, 15 years, and keep our capacity, right? But I understand you have to run a landfill, and you have employees. But within your budget, is there a way to 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 find a balance where we can prolong the life of our landfill and and transfer a set amount, you know, every year?
Not currently. Now, when Davenport looks at this, when we're talking about that hybrid model, that is something they're going to look at. And like, when we looked at the transfer station and and having to haul, now I have all of those numbers. So I can give Davenport those numbers. They're numbers we didn't have before. And so now I have that $33 per ton for disposal and the $30 per ton for hauling. So those are numbers that Davenport can now take forward and and see if we do have the money for that going forward.
Okay. So last question, and I've talked about this for five years. But do you know what it costs to grind mulch in our landfill every year? Does that?
Uh huh.
Is that neutral?
Um, it's pretty, it's pretty close, and it's going to go up.
I just feel like we shouldn't take, is there a statute that makes us take mulch in our landfill?
Um, we, there is not, not that I'm aware of. I know Clay County does not take
There's independent contractors out here that would that would repurpose that, sell it back to the community for mulch, and we don't have to touch it. We don't have to grind it. We don't have to store it. I mean, there's thousands, tens of thousands of yards sitting in Highlands, sitting in Franklin. We don't need to touch. And it's a fire hazard.
I would rather not touch it. But we do use it down here at the landfill for 50 50 cover. We mix it with dirt, and we cover our landfill for with it. We also use it on our slopes for stability. So we do have a use for it down here. I don't know if it's worth the cost.
We have an excessive surplus.
We sure do, especially after hurricane.
And that's the problem. Chris used to tell me that, and I believed it the first couple of times, but the pile keeps getting bigger. So my point is, is there a way to set up with a contractor, if he were to put in certified scales, that we can just say mulch goes over here? We're not taking stumps, I'm sorry, brush, stumps, logs, organic debris?
I don't know. Would they be able to do that on landfill property?
Not on landfill property.
Yeah, won't be on that.
No, completely different independent contractor.
And I think we have one of those here, right? And so I'm not opposed to it.
Okay.
But it is just a service we have provided. I don't know how much they charge for it, but
Just just a few thoughts. So I think that's really all I had for you.
Jackson County, don't they sell that?
I I don't think we're allowed to sell it.
But I think, well
They, I I'm not sure if they sell it. I know they at least give it away. So in order to be able to do that, you have to not take bulk leaves. So we would just have to say we don't accept leaves, and then people could come take it. I'm not sure how much interest there would be, honestly, to to take that type of mulch. It's not great mulch, I'll say.
We used to use it all the time in Highlands and landscaping business until the landfill stopped us from using it. And but, you know, I see that mulch leaving Highlands, going to nurseries and places. So it's my understanding that it's
It's not supposed to.
Well, it is.
I know. I'm just, it's
Actually, and and so I'm like the chairman, if there's a way to privatize that, it would it'd be a lot less expense on the landfill.
Mm hmm.
I think all that would take would be the board basically stating that we don't accept that anymore. We would take that out of our fee schedule, and we just wouldn't accept it.
There's there's no
Well, I mean, obviously, I think you have to have a plan for it before you before you do that. You're going to have problems.
No, and last comment, I just I worry about the equity and the leverage and the cost. If we're going to be, you know, leveraging 10 years, pretty much at at max budget, what are we going to do in 12 years, you know, in 15 years? I mean, it's like we're we're never going to get ahead.
Sure. And and that's that's the the beauty of Davenport is hopefully, they'll they'll shoot that out 10 years and and kind of kind of show you that scope. But
I I had that concern, too. But I'm I guess I'm looking at it. It is a business. It's an enterprise budget. We're not going to make any money. We're going to break even. But I would be okay if we could figure out how to break even over a 10 year period. The thing that scares me is if we go with the smaller cell, or we look at some other options, we're at the mercy 100% of some of these other companies. Some of the rates that were proposed were astronomical, which would be terrible for us to have to put on the table of our taxpayers.
I agree.
So I think the educated approach that we're trying to ease into is a good plan for us. We we may not hit all the answers, may not have all the solutions, but but we're sure going to point it in a direction to try and get you everything that you want.
Right now, I mean, Jamie's presentation showed you that hauling today is more expensive than the landfill. Confident of that. You don't know what that will be in the future. That that's the biggest thing. So if you did go there, you'd have to have a long term contract. So building, another thing, there is some, you know, opportunity to gain some, to get ahead or gain some on it. Once we get cell three and cell four, you're going to get a lot of bang for your buck for cell three and cell four. Yes, construction continues to go up, right? But when you get three and four, you're instead of having this small cell, and then we got another cell out here, now you're going to have a cell that geometrically is going to allow you to build on top of. You can get a lot more airspace out of cell three and four than you did one and two. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, okay. No, Jamie, I think you did a great job. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your right arm, stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Tammy, please let the record reflect 5 0. All right, new business. Discussion and consideration of resolution for a referendum concerning a quarter cent sales tax. Manager Cave.
So, Mr. Chairman, in your packet, you do have a draft resolution. The board has talked about this several times about the quarter cent sales tax. It's previously been voted on twice, and it's been discussed here a couple of times. So in your packet, if you do want to consider trying to put that on to the ballot for a third time, that resolution is there. It is the quarter cent sales tax increase. One of the things that you would need to decide, first of all, what election would you want to have that included in? Your choice would be the primary election in 2026 or the general election in 2026. The resolution that Eric drafted also has some space there that you can either designate the funds for a certain purpose, or you make that decision later on after it's after it's approved, if it is approved, put on the ballot. That can obviously change. I will caution the board that if you do were to decide to include what you wanted that purpose to be in that resolution, that doesn't necessarily hold future boards to that. They can they can obviously change that. And then the other question that a lot of times folks will ask, it it does not apply to to unprepared food and grocery, which are groceries or gasoline purchases. It doesn't apply to that. And the estimates that were done in 2024, and we can obviously rerun these, but the estimate at the time was that quarter cent, quarter cent local option sales tax would generate about 2.3 million dollars annually in additional sales tax revenue. So we just wanted to put that up for discussion tonight, general discussion. 2.3 million was the estimate in 2024. There were some other figures run on a on a $25 purchase, it would result in a six cent increase. On a $100 purchase, it would end end up being a 25 cent increase, just as some examples.
Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we place the resolution for referendum concerning quarter cent sales tax on the November 26 general election ballot.
Second. I hear a motion by Commissioner Sherrill, and second by Commissioner Shields. Any further discussion?
So the discussion I would have is, there is a blank on there that you can specify for a purpose, or you can not fill that blank in. Mr. Goss, I believe that's how it's written correctly. So we would need to know, do you want a purpose on there for the resolution, or do you want to leave it blank for now?
I I think there's a point in time, you had to put that purpose on there for the for the voters. We, the last time that we we voted on this, we had it specified for the capital part of the school system. And but but I think what that does, it's needy, but it's singleton, makes a singleton piece out of something like for the schools. But you have the senior citizens, you have a number of other, and I think you can probably mention some of those, that we need to make sure that we we can spread this monies out to those, some of those that you that you've talked about. Can you share some of that with?
Well, obviously, some of the space needs we have are the the senior center. We've we've looked at veteran services, some space needs for them. Our our housing department has locations scattered in a lot of places. So obviously, I mean, if you if you did not fill in that blank, and you didn't specify a purpose, you could certainly talk about that in the budget process, and consecutive budget processes after that, what you would use those funds for. So you could you could use that at your discretion. And and we've obviously talked about, one of the things we've talked about is the funding percentage for the schools. We could we could obviously tie that back into a financial formula as we go into the budget process to meet the percentage, if that's what you want to do, coming up in the next couple of budget years, and or use those funds for other purposes.
I agree, and I think that's a good point, Commissioner Shields. And also, don't overlook the phase two and phase three at the Robert C. Carpenter Center, you know, and
Correct.
And there's a lot of, like, really
We got a Hickton house, too.
And a Hickton house.
That we got the
Justice center, all kinds of stuff that's needed, so.
We have a we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion?
If you'll clarify, that motion is to remove the the sections for the earmark. This is, it sounds like there's a consensus of the board, but if we clarify that.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, sir. So so to clarify the motion, we're going to select the referendum on the general 26 election, this time with no earmark of the funds. All right.
I have a question. If we if we decided to change that between now and then, is that ?
Are you talking about going to the primary?
No, no, no.
He's talking about earmarking the funds.
I'm with I'm with you. I think somewhere along the line, you have to earmark it, or the voter won't be interested. Are they, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I feel like there needs to be potentially
Some some direction for for folks to to know what what the plan is. But I, even if we don't, is it a possibility, you know, if we decide to change that?
Before the ballots are made out, yeah.
There are timeline requirements for the Board of Elections for publishing the ballot. So based on your decision to go with the general election, you would have enough time. If we were looking at the primary, we would be, we would have a time crunch. But based on the general election, you would have an opportunity. You would still have to consider that again in in the appropriate time to be able to have it passed to go before the
Not only that, you have potential for this face of this board to change drastically at the next general election. So therefore, if we did earmark it, then the, as the manager said, that can certainly be changed by a future board. So
That's good discussion. That's good. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your right arm and state aye for the record.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Miss Tammy, 5 0. Discussion and approval of resolution concerning potentially dangerous dogs. Manager Cave.
So, Mr. Chairman, we actually have a dangerous dog committee that reviews when animal control identifies or basically identifies a dog as being potentially dangerous. There's a committee that reviews that decision that's made, and that's the appeal process. And what happens is, a person can appeal that to the dangerous dog committee, and then depending on their decision, they will then appeal it to the court system. In that process of doing one of those recently, we discovered that when that resolution was first drafted, the three members on that committee were a were the sheriff, a designee from the Board of Commissioners, and it had a person on there by name, a specific name. And that's not real conducive when that person no longer works for Macon County anymore. So we we really needed to change that resolution. So it was a position instead of a person by name. So the recommendation that we had, and we've we've, obviously, this will affect the the Health Board as well, was to change that resolution to state it would be the Macon County Sheriff or his designee, a member of the Board of Commissioners, which you would appoint, and then a member of the Board of Health, or now the Consolidated Health Services Agency, Health Services Agency designated by the Chairman of the Board of Health, or Consolidated Health Services Agency. And that'll take out the issue of having a person on there by name, and then the the Health Board can appoint that person there. board can appoint that person there.
All right.
Being the liaison to the dangerous dog board, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion. We approve the corrections or additions, the red lettering, I guess what I'm going to say. That's within the dog ordinance here, dog, dangerous dog, potentially dangerous dog in Macon County, North Carolina, the resolution there. Go ahead and adopt this, if you're presenting.
I hear a motion by Commissioner Shields, second by Commissioner Breeden. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your right arm stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Miss Tammy, five oh. Thank you. All right, discussion and consideration of contract for the recruitment of social services director, DSS Director, Mr. Patrick Betancourt.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Patrick.
Reminded by Commissioner Breeden that I'm cutting into your Thursday night football, so I'll try to be brief as best I can. I have the pleasure tonight of coming before you to talk a little bit about succession planning at the Department of Social Services. And I'll just kind of go through a few key points. You had a rather lengthy document in your packet that if you get a chance to take a look at and kind of lays out what I'm going to be talking about a little bit more detail. So transition planning for my upcoming retirement in May of 2026 began in January of this year with the development of a budget that would allow and support the overlap of the new director coming on board and myself for about four months. At the same time, the Board of Social Services voted to engage the same firm that was used when former Director Jane Kimsey retired and I was appointed to that position. So developmental associates is the organization that we're talking about. The Board of Social Services voted to engage developmental associates in assisting in the selection process for the new director. We put forward a budget request with nonrecurring funds to cover the engagement of that. That budget request was not approved at the time, but because we have some significant lapse salary, regrettably, because we have significant lapse salary at the Department of Social Services, and also through some conservative contract amending, contract management, we've been able to find the dollars to be able to support the engagement of developmental associates. We'd like to go ahead and begin that process, and once we engage developmental associates, we'll ask them to provide a billing on a per step basis. You saw in your packet that that is, this is a multi-step process. And while the amount that they're asking for for this engagement is not insignificant, it's a fairly large sum of money, I think there's plenty of support to, plenty of reasons why I could justify using those funds to engage this firm for making such a momentous decision. Just a reminder that contracts through the Department of Social Services, sometimes directly and sometimes indirectly, are reimbursed roughly on a 50% basis. Every time I use that figure, my business officer cringes a little bit, but that's generally around the amount of reimbursement we get on those types of contracts. And you'll see in your proposal packets that Developmental Associates has laid out a fairly lengthy timeframe for engagement, around 75 days. And so if we're looking at some multi-lap, multi-month overlap, we would want to go ahead and begin that process as quickly as possible. Ideally, would love to have the next person named by February of 2026 so that there can be some planning and some onboarding, if you will, between that individual and myself. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the recommendation, about our process. I'm happy to kind of answer as many questions I possibly can about the engagement with developmental associates.
Patrick, I've never seen anything this in depth. 75 hours to read it.
It is a fairly in-depth proposal, and it covers a lot of different pieces. I think probably two of the pieces that I would really call your attention to, I think is really important to focus in on is, one, it goes way beyond just an interview with an individual. It goes very in-depth into both hard and soft skill analysis. Does this person understand what it takes to develop a budget? Does it do they understand what it means to present a budget? Do they have the ability to come up here and present a budget to you guys? It looks at, it incorporates also what I like about this process. It also incorporates that local stakeholder input. So it's not just one or two people in Macon County making this determination. The assessment process actually looks at engaging several folks. The time I did it back in 2015, there was actually a commissioner on the doing the assessment process. So it looks at making sure that folks in the community have input into the assessment process and get a chance to kind of say what's important to them in their next social services director.
Patrick, I'd have to, I don't know if you're aware of what the health board did with Ms. Kizer and some of the county staff. As a health board member, we voted to select a committee to start the process of hiring a new health director. And through that process, I think that committee and some of the county staff did a phenomenal job with interviews and everything else. I won't go into details, but we as the health board members were actually able to see all these interviews and to pay a firm. Where where did you come from?
Came from originally came from Raleigh, the Raleigh area.
Okay. This firm, where did they hire you from?
Oh, I came before from Union County.
So they found you in Union County to replace Jane Kimsey?
Yes, sir.
And so Ms. Kimsey is a native of Macon County. And I appreciate what they've presented and the work that they do, but I think we as a county have absolutely fantastic staff to to be able to hire or at least go through the process. And if we can't, then I think we should, then we could certainly go into them. But I'm sure some of the committee members that did the interviews for the health board would like to have been paid what this company
Sure, sure.
And so I mean, I appreciate it. I mean, you know, the Department of Social Services is, you know, you guys do wonderful work. But I just, I can't, I couldn't support paying that without seeing what's out there.
The beauty of this is the individuals in who the individuals who are local, who are interested in the process or are interested in the position, have just as much opportunity to be a part of that process, apply for it, just like anyone else that that this firm might actually go out and specifically target. There's there's it's multimodal, so they get to do it kind of both ways. And just just so I make sure I want to, I want to be real clear about this. This firm does not actually do the hiring. That still falls to the Board of Social Services. This firm just simply takes the candidates that do come in for the position, puts them through a series of assessment processes that, again, incredibly in-depth process, and then provides that information to the board to make that determination.
I'd like for your board to go through the same process as the health board and select a committee from the health board members, get with some of the county staff, and come up with a job description and put it out there and see if there are interest without costing the taxpayers any more money.
Yeah, this proposal actually requires that the board has to engage in that kind of process where the entire board has to provide job descriptions, they have to provide what they're looking for. So they'll have to engage in that process in order to make that happen.
I guess, where do we go from here? I feel like Patrick's a little bit of a time crunch. Do we look at this group here, give them a yes or no, maybe, and go ahead and try to assemble another group that what John's talking about and go ahead and?
That would certainly be the Board of Social Services' request, is that we that we be given the go ahead to engage this firm and begin working on that process.
When does your board meet again?
We meet again November 21st.
I would like some information back from the board to see if you guys can form a committee and include some county staff to to put it out there. We have time. I mean, we we were in a crunch for the director of the Health Department, and and that's going to work out January 13th, right? Is that when?
That's a tentative date, yes.
So, I mean, and and that process was wonderful, and I think the applicants were very professional qualified people. And the folks here locally had the same opportunity if they had the qualifications to fill out the application. So they were not denied the access to move forward, to move up into the director's position. So to me, I can't, I can't pay a firm for what we have professionals here in this county to do. That's that's just
Mr. Betancourt, let me work this backwards.
Sure.
What's your estimated time to retire?
It would be May 30th, 2026.
Okay, so
I think I might even have that letter on me if you need it.
Is that negotiable? And you would like to have, what, a mentor for 90 days?
I'd like to have at least a three month overlap, yes, sir.
So that puts us somewhere in February. I feel like would it be appropriate to go ahead and and open this up? Maybe this is a question for HR? And propose what Commissioner Sherrill's asking? You know, just just try it locally. You know, maybe we open it up for 60 days. If we don't have good engagement, good feedback, we engage with the firm and
Can I say one thing to that? And we can't, obviously don't want to get into too many details, but when we did that with the health board, it wasn't, we weren't just targeting local people. We had applicants from the West Coast, Northeast. I mean, it was it wasn't just local folks. I mean, we can, I feel like I'm kind of agreeance with John on that. You know, you, it takes time, it takes, you know, an effort to do it, but but we put the time in and we had some really good candidates from all over this country and some that even served outside of this country, so.
They've been all over the world, actually.
So I think, I mean, to me, it would be worth, you know, I mean, I know it's $24,000, $26,000 to do that, but it'd be worth to me to try to see what we could accomplish in in that month timeframe or whatever it takes to to post that job and do some interviews.
I think Ms. Kizer did a good job giving us information on what we could propose to a client, questions and those type of things, whether it was to Mr. Cabe. And when that job opened up, we were able to do that. I'm going to plead ignorant. I don't know all your, all this stuff that we need to be asking somebody. How do we come up with the questions? And you had those questions when we were interviewing for our county manager. But there's got to be some, this company here is very detailed in their questions. I don't know what they're asking. So how do we get something that would give us, so we could go over them like we did for the county manager? Is there a detailed thing that we could look at it?
We did a similar process with the health director interview questions. The Board of Health reviewed those, discussed those. We have guidelines from different national organizations that we can pull from and look at. So we can, we can come up with that, just like we did with the county manager position and the director, if that's your
That was real important for us.
The interview process for the health director was absolutely top notch. And guess what? It didn't cost the taxpayers any money other than the hours and hours and hours that was put into it. But I think we, I think we have staff here and with your board and with your direction that I believe we can handle this without an outside agency.
Sure, I have no problem with taking the information back to my board and seeing what their preference would be. I'm a little bit of a, I admit, I'm a little bit of an uncomfortable spot because ultimately I don't get to make that determination. Respectfully, you guys don't get to make that determination. That the social services board is the one who ultimately gets to make the determination of who they hire in this.
That's correct.
And so along with that, I think they also get a strong sense of how they want to go about that process. And so while I don't mind taking this back to them and having that conversation with them, I just want to point out this is the direction that they voted to go. Again, I think I'll make sure to link this meeting so that they can hear the conversation and they can take that under consideration. I guess I'm just a little bit, I don't know that I'm here to ask permission to do this because I think that ultimately that's the social services board's role.
Who's going to spend the money?
The agency will.
The agency, and where did the money come from?
It came from the
The county taxpayers.
Yes, sir.
So the ultimately, the county taxpayers has the upper hand on who and when we spend money. And it is wrong, Patrick, to have money spent in this county that we don't have to spend. I understand you can hire professionals, agencies and everything else, but at least the DSS board ought to be willing to give us a chance to do this with their help, with your guidance, with HR, with the county manager. Ultimately, you guys are the ones that make the decision on who is hired. But my deal is, we have to save money every chance we get, and and this is one of those opportunities that we can do the right thing. And and I may eat my words.
Sure.
We may have to hire this firm, but I think it's worth the opportunity to let the county staff that we pay handle this.
And and I have no argument against that. You're 100% correct, Commissioner Sherrill, that ultimately it is this board's responsibility to be fiscally conservative. And we can debate whether or not it's a good use of that money. We'll just, just to give a counterproposal, I will say, when hiring mistakes are made, they can be incredibly costly. I think you can look down the road and look in Cherokee County, where they were required to raise their mileage rate by 11 cents to cover a 27 and a quarter million dollar lawsuit payout. That's county dollars. That's it's also very significant money, and a large part of why they had to pay that out was they made a wrong hiring decision based on the experience of an individual. So I don't disagree with what you're saying at all. I hear you that you're right. The taxpayers have ultimately the upper hand. And what I would counter your your statements with is, this is our best attempt to make sure that we don't have to pay out a significantly larger sum.
And and I respect that.
Thank you.
And I respect the professionalism of you and your career.
Thank you.
And the and the DSS board. There is nothing about me that wants to show any disrespect or not appreciation for that board.
I appreciate that.
Ultimately, they are the ones that's going to vote.
Right.
But this county has 600 employees, right? I mean, I think that's somewhere in that neighborhood. I didn't hire those people. The county manager and the county HR did. So I think they have some type of professionalism
Without a doubt.
Without paying this amount of money. And and don't take it the wrong way.
No, sir.
I'm just looking at every, every way possible to make sure that we are running the most effective and efficient government for the taxpayers and the citizens of this county. And and so if we can save this amount of money?
Sure. Sure.
I want to do it.
I hear you and I, and I understand. And I believe the Board would agree with you and, and want to be responsible in that regard as well. So, again, I'm happy to take this back to them, let them have some conversation and maybe even have an opportunity to speak directly with this Board about what their, what their desire is.
I was not on the committee to select and do the applicants for the Health Board. I did watch it. And they did an outstanding job from what they did. It was amazing.
Good.
And I believe you and your Board, with the help of some of the other staff that worked through the Health Director process, will be equally as professional.
I'm happy to take that back to the Board.
Thank you, Patrick.
Sure, my pleasure.
Let me recap, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I want to recap, you know, this company has a good track record, obviously, yourself. I think what Commissioner Sherrill is proposing is we open it up, see what happens. If we don't get any good feedback, we engage with this firm. And you have a wonderful Board, professionals. Let's, let's see what they say to that.
Yeah.
I didn't even know there was a DSS Board and a DSS Director because we never hear from you.
I'm not sure how to take that, Commissioner Sherrill. I think I'm going to take that as a compliment, but we do exist.
Yes.
Just as well.
Well, Patrick, I appreciate everything you've done, you know, in this position.
Thank you.
You've obviously done a really good job. I've had a chance to work with you. And I do trust your recommendation on that. It makes sense, I get it. But we'll follow this way.
Sounds like a plan.
But I think your Board has to give us the direction on what they're looking for in a Director and all that other stuff. So, I think you guys have to compile all this information for us to put it out there. So, if you can do it at your next meeting and then maybe get with the County HR or whatever and, or maybe the, in her spare time, she could probably?
I understand she's got a lot of free time.
She could join in with you guys and get it together. We want the best of, but I think our people can handle it.
Patrick, let me say one thing. Since I've worked with you, we've been together, worked in a lot of situations. They have an opportunity to have seen the best. That's you.
Oh, I was going to pass that along to Ms. Kimsey.
Okay. But you've been a, you've been a person that's really been an example to that department. And I think if they'll keep that perspective in mind, I'm not sure we'll duplicate a Patrick, but it'll be close.
I would hope not.
Well, but I've been really enjoying working with you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sherrill, I appreciate it.
Last comment.
Yes, sir.
You know, I think we really appreciate, you know, your thoughts and, and all this effort into your succession plan. You know, that shows incredible leadership skills and we do appreciate that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You didn't have to do all this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Bring the champagne.
May 20, 30th, May 30th.
Thanks, Patrick.
All right, moving on, 11D. Fontana Regional Library Interlokal Agreement, Manager Cave.
So, Mr. Chairman, I was presented with an amendment to the Fontana Regional Library Agreement from Jackson County. One of the things that they had requested was to, some things for this Board to consider. And I'll summarize the, the changes to the agreement. Basically, there are basically three of them that are in your packet. The first change or changed amendment that they wanted to consider changing had to do with the membership of the Board of Trustees Fontana Regional Library System. They had proposed that one of those members be a sitting member of the current Board of Commissioners, one from each of the counties. The second change that was suggested, and again, this is a summary, is that the Regional Director would devote full effort to the Fontana Regional Library System and not serve a dual role as a Director in a County Library System or another comparable system. And then the third change that was recommended in that amendment had to do with the financial aspect. At the end of the year, any, any remaining funds in excess of operational costs that had been allocated by the county, if those are left over, those would be returned back to the, the counties, any leftover funds. So, that's basically, basically a summary of what Jackson County was asked that we consider. Jackson County will actually hold a meeting on that, I believe it's next week, for their consideration of that. I would also like to remind the Board, Mr. Goss and I have looked at the interlocal agreement that you entered into and it's our interpretation that you can consider that tonight, you can discuss it if you want to, but the, at least at the earliest that you could actually vote on that would be at least the December meeting to meet the 30-day timeframe that's in there. So, we just wanted to present that to you as information from the, from Jackson County, a proposal from them for your consideration and for you to decide either whether you want to consider that further or not and discuss it.
I'd like to say something on this. When you put three Commissioners together, one from one county, one from another county, one from the, having been the high school principal, I'd like to know who the other principal, who the other Commissioners are going to be because we know what Smoky Mountain Conference is. And I don't want to go into a Fontana Regional Library and necessarily in our fight with the other coaches or who it may be and verbally or physically, but I think you're not getting anything. And you'd have to know when you say Smoky Mountain Conference, the interactions we've had, positive and negative. And if you've got people who are Commissioners, I'm a principal and I can tell you that the interactions, there are some people I would probably have a, if they propose something and they were a Commissioner, and let's say they're a former coach, something comes into me and said, I'm not buying into that. So, I think when you have three Commissioners there, remember Swain, Smoky Mountain, Franklin, we've been brothers and sisters forever and war and peace. And when you, you've got a situation here, I'm going to pick on him, is that when we walk into a gym nation somewhere, if we're not doing what their Commissioners want, you can become a target. And he's got a young man, it's a sophomore, that he doesn't need this. But, but there's some high anxiety within me of knowing who the Commissioners are at the other two counties. Gary Shields would not be a good Commissioner to be on this Board. 21 years of positive and negative interaction, I have feelings and they do too. And so, when you, you put three Commissioners together, one from each county, I don't want us to be the, be the conversation piece. I don't, I don't want to talk about winning when Josh played back there 20 years ago or what the last night, what we did over in Smoky Mountain or Swain in basketball, football. I don't want to get in that conversation. But it's a natural movement that a way. And then all of a sudden, your Fontana Regional Library is the second piece of the conversation, not the first piece. I just wanted to put that out there. When I first read this, I said, three Commissioners from the Smoky Mountain Conference that are in the Smoky Mountain Conference, even two of the Commissioners, counting us, and we're in the same conference now. And so, I just wanted us to be aware that I don't feel comfortable with three Commissioners being on the Board. Because it's, I know, I know a former Commissioner from Swain County, good person. I know one that's from Jackson County that's a Commissioner, all good people, but we've, we've had our days and I just don't want it to start being a hindrance against the Fontana Regional Library, our, our conversations and those type things like that. I'd like to have somebody there that's clear-headed, clear-mord and can see the whole thing and not get caught up in other conversations. Joe Allen, like I've seen you act there and I've had, within these type things, it happens and it, it's, it's a lasting thing, especially if you're in the schools and in administration part of it. And I just, when I read through that was my nervous piece, that you're putting three people with a certain degree of power back in the same arena. I can't swear it won't come out the same way as we've been in before. And y'all know what I'm talking about.
Well, I was going in a very different direction.
Yeah, but you, you love to train.
I mean, I didn't, I would hope with the Library we don't have to go to war. Apparently, we got to make sure at these meetings, Mr. Joe Allen is not present.
This is close, too.
My, my only concern in this was, a lot of the times that we've had the meetings for the FRL, they've been on the same nights as our meetings. And that, that's a major conflict because, especially when the meetings are all the way in Nantahala, you know, I've done that a couple of times and there's no, it's just not possible, you can't keep doing that. So, my recommendation would be to first of all, change the days of the meetings so where it doesn't conflict with ours. But I definitely didn't consider the piece that Mr. Shields just brought up, so, you know, we'll navigate through that, I guess, as peacefully as possible. And again, Mr. Joe Allen, we need you to not be present during these meetings.
Would it be possible for Mr. Antoine to have alternate Commissioners to serve on that Board because there will be, I mean, if this is the path forward, it will be absolutely critical that a Commissioner from each county is at this, at each one of the meetings.
I think we absolutely need to have a voice there and I hadn't considered that. It's a good idea to alternate that as we go. But again, would that be an issue about changing the time for the meetings or the days?
We talked about that last night.
Okay. Awesome. I do like Commissioner Sherrill's idea of rotating the Commissioners.
That's a lot of, that's a lot of traveling and a lot of?
Oh, it's a lot.
Commitment to?
It is.
Mr. Goss?
I think you're looking at an appointment to a Board. And so, it's not, it wouldn't be a seat that rotates. It would be one Commissioner being appointed. There would certainly be terms to that. And so, you could, this Board could change who that person is on that rotation schedule, but it would be one individual appointed. It would be very difficult for the Fontana Regional Library Board to be able to conduct its business if it was every time had a new Commissioner to get up to speed as to what the issue of the day was. That would make it difficult. So, the intent, sort of with their bylaws, would be, it would be one appointment.
And I'll be glad, obviously, Jackson County submitted this information to us and of course, Library folks are here as well. I'll be glad to take, kind of take the comments that you've had tonight and if you have any more, relay that back to them so they'll have that for consideration as well to make sure that information gets back to them for your concerns or any information that you've brought out tonight.
Sounds good.
Any other comments? All right, Library, you guys good? Mr. McGaughy, any comments?
Up until 2006, we had a full-time Director and it was budget. The college has become a librarian, it served in both positions, supposedly full-time, which is impossible. So, the funding for the additional cost of a full-time employee would be an issue for me and I think some others on the Board. We did not discuss anything last night other than the fact that the conflict in the schedule of dates. I gave the information and we will discuss and vote on it at our next meeting, which is January 13th.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Hearing motion by Commissioner Breeden.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Antoine. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your right arm, stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Ms. Tammy, the recite, 5-0, please. Appointments, we have a couple. One seat, the Jury Commission, Manager Cave.
Yeah, I'll, I'll introduce this one. We were approached by Clerk Inspector Court Shawna Lamb that she actually has a Jury Commission that looks over the, the names and determines eligibility for jury duty. She has requested an appointment to that committee for her, which is Ms. Pam Ledford, who's actually a current McGinn County employee, but is actually going to be retiring by the time this takes place. We actually had a discussion. Normally, we will advertise for appointments, but she is an elected official, so we felt like it was pertinent to present the name to you that she had suggested and picked for that position for your consideration.
All right, gentlemen.
Motion to approve.
Hearing motion by Commissioner Breeden, second by Commissioner Sherrill. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right arm, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, 5-0, Ms. Tammy. Where you scratched the planning board, item C, Community Advisory Committee, two seats.
So, I will talk about that one. So, this committee, the Community Advisory Committee, is a link to the long-term care facilities, nursing homes in the county. This is a position for folks who have to go through, what I understand is a pretty rigorous state training and approval process. They go into nursing homes quarterly, they visit with the residents there to look at the living conditions there, if they're satisfied with their care, any complaints, those kinds of things, and work with the facility staff if needed, as well as the licensing entities that come in and make those visits. So, they, these folks go through the training, the, once they pass the test and the training, then the state makes a recommendation back to the region that that's happened and it is a statutory requirement that the Commissioners bless those appointments. So, there are two individuals who have been going through that training, they've actually been going through that training, I believe, for over a year when they first reached out to us to give us a heads-up that this was going to be coming. And you have those applications in your packet and that is the recommendation to go ahead and appoint those two people. And it is Ms. Sandra Hooper and Richard Brady.
Motion to approve.
Hearing motion by Commissioner Breeden.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Antoine. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right arm, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Ms. Tammy, 5-0. All right, Mr. Goss, I do understand we have a brief closed session.
That is correct. So, it would be a motion to enter a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-31811, subsection 5, to establish or instruct the public body's staff in negotiating agents concerning positions to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the amount of compensation, other material terms of employment contract or proposed employment contract.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
I need a motion.
Second.
No, I'm sorry, I need, hearing motion by Commissioner Breeden, second by Commissioner Sherrill, I'm sorry. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right arm, state aye.
Aye.
Ms. Tammy, that's 5-0.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Is there going to be any passion in that?